Okay, trustee Turner, we are ready when you are.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Today is January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. It's a regular board meeting of the Adelanto Elementary School District. The time is five thirty-four P. M. We will call to order. One point oh three roll call.
Sorry, trustee Dence. Trustee Benz.
Oh, I'm here.
Trustee Eckes.
Uh, here.
Trustee La French.
La French present.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner present.
And I'll take note that trustee Heinz will be absent tonight.
Okay, we do have a quorum that's four zero. Um, one point oh four pledge of allegiance. Will everyone please stand? Place your right hand on your heart. Ready? Again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Moving on to section two, adoption of the agenda, two point oh one, proposed additions, deletions, adjustments in order of business.
Madam President, we do. We will be removing item twelve point fourteen. That's certificated administrative new hire.
Okay.
And then we have an amendment on item twelve point thirteen. Under, that's human resources extra duty assignments. Under fiscal impact, the fiscal impact is coming out of multiple district funds. If approved, the cost will be forty-three thousand six hundred and forty-four, as listed on this schedule. And also Teresa Moore, she is, that funding is from the LCFF, which is the zero one zero zero fund.
Okay, and forty-three thousand six hundred and forty-four.
Correct.
Okay, and that's the LCFF?
Correct, and that's the zero one zero zero fund.
Zero one.
Zero, zero one.
Okay, and then I noticed that on that, that same agenda, that um, some of it's listed under the ACES program. Do you have those figures of how much is coming out of the ACES after school program? Go ahead. Dr. Mitchell.
I have that information.
Okay.
Okay, so um. So from the ACES grant, uh, the code sixteen, six zero one zero, it's sixteen thousand six hundred and forty dollars.
Sixteen thousand six hundred and forty.
Uh-huh, for the after-school coding, the kids' code grant, that's thirteen thousand one hundred and four.
Okay.
And the other is title one in LCFF.
Okay, title one, so the remaining, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So we will modify that, so it's not coming out of the general fund, it's coming out of, well, forty-three thousand six hundred and forty-four is. Am I correct on that?
Forty-three thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars coming out of a variety of um, funds that are listed in the uh, board document.
So. So we will change that from the general fund to these funds here.
Yes.
Am I correct on that?
Sure.
Okay. Hey, is that it? Uh, Ms. Leve?
Yes, it is, Madam President.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, there was also one more on the closed session, uh, public comment period. Did we get that changed?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so I will just cross that off, right? It's changed here.
Yeah.
Am I correct on that? Okay. Okay. Hearing, that's it. Okay, we'll move to two point oh two, adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I motion.
Have a motion by trustee Eckes to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
I, I second.
Have a second by trustee Benz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I. Motion passed four zero. Okay, moving on to section three, annual reorganization, annual organization. Administration of the oath of office to newly attract newly elected trustees, well, she's not newly elected, for trustee Eckes. Dr. Mitchell?
I thank you, uh, president Turner. Uh, Ms. Eckes, if I can have you stand and raise your right hand, please.
You're gonna see my tummy. Okay, got my Bible.
There you go, thank you so much. If you could repeat that to me, I state your name.
I, Holly Eckes.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the United, the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
All enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation.
That I take this obligation.
Freely, without any mental reservation.
Freely with any mental, without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
To charge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
To charge, to charge this duties I am about to now enter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, trustee Eckes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Holly.
Thank you. It's such an honor, you guys, it really is. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to section four, for closed session declarations. We will be taking four point oh two, government code section five four nine, five seven point nine, update conference with the labor negotiations. And we'll be taking four point oh three, government code section five four nine, five seven, public employee discipline, dismissal, release, appointment, and resignation.
Reassignment.
Reassignment. Um, moving on, section five, public testimony before closed session. Okay. Public comment period is administered by state law and is, in the point of the meeting, set aside for members of the public to share their opinion with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. The health, well-being, and public safety of the community members, public officials, and employees is a top priority for the Adelanto Elementary School District. Consistent with the shelter-in-place orders from the govern, governor and San Bernardino County Board members and staff may participate in this meeting via Zoom. This meeting is in compliance with the governor's executive order in twenty-nine twenty, which allows for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Likewise, in-person attendance at board meetings will not be permitted. Protocol for speakers, any person who wishes to address the governing board on open session, on closed session agenda items only, must complete. And, and submit an AESD speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. Individuals, speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each closed session agen, agenda item. The board limit the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional person speak. An additional person speak only if they have something new to add. Do we have any?
Yes, Madam President, we do have uh, two speakers for closed session. I call to the, uh, ask you to unmute yourself, uh, Ms. Nanette Cadilly, president of ADTA. I know that she was uh, rushing to get home to get on the meeting. Nanette, are you on yet?
Uh, yes, I'm on, but I'm not quite home yet. Um, so I'm still driving and half of my face is numb. So I will speak, um, at the next sec, session, an open session, um, but I do want to um, say good evening to the trustees and the board and Dr. Mitchell. Um, I'm Nanette Cadilly, ADTA president. Um, and I am very pleased that our bargaining team has a presentation tonight to share with you, and I hope that you all pay close attention. Um, and then I will go ahead and speak during opening session so that I can gather my notes and not be driving while I'm speaking. Thank you very much.
Guys, thank you so much. You know, safe travels, and we'll, we'll call you back up for uh, open session. Uh, next speaker for closed session is Debbie Thomas from, uh, just Debbie Thomas speaking for herself about COVID nineteen. Uh, Ms. Thomas, please unmute yourself.
Actually, I'm speaking about, as the bargaining team, a bargaining team member, so it's not about COVID nineteen, it's about bargaining. Okay, all right, good evening, board and cabinet members. My name is Debbie Thomas. I am presently a member of the ADTA bargaining team. I would like to speak to you briefly regarding our salary and benefits. Ironically, I presented a similar presentation the year we went to impasse. Mrs. Eckes and Mrs. Turner were probably on the board at that time. At the time, I was paid over fourteen thousand dollars less than Victor Elementary. In the two thousand fifteen sixteen bargaining year, the Adelanto School District, School Board and management team was committed to matching our salary schedule with Victor Elementary School District. They wanted us to be the highest-paid district in the high desert. What a breaking point that was. In the past five years, we've continued to fall further and further behind Victor L.'s salary schedule. We are now about four and a half percent behind Victor Elementary. ADTA is providing you with the current salary schedules for Adelanto, Victor L., Victor Union, Hesperia, and Apple Valley, as well as their most current benefits package. Um, you should have received a copy of the presentation, and although I can't present the presentation tonight, if you have any questions, you can email me. I wanted, I did want to point out a few things, quick facts, though. Currently, we are four and a half percent behind Victor Elementary, our most comparable district in the high desert. We are five percent behind Hesperia at the beginning of the salary schedule and fall to astounding nineteen percent behind year ten. Thankfully, our scales come closer together near the end of the uh, uh, the salary schedule, but only if you were in the district for twenty years or you have twenty-eight years of experience. While we start out at twenty-five dollars behind Victor Union's for a first-year teacher, we are an elementary district trying to attract single-subject teachers for our middle schools. The district wants single-subject teachers, and yet we fall be hot, far behind Victor Union's uh, salary, sales, and benefits. I'm constantly hearing from teachers that um, have single subjects, that they're tempted to leave, but we need to keep our good teacher. When I was choosing districts twenty-five years ago, I chose the Adelanto School District because at the time, it was the highest-paid district in the high desert. I actually compared all districts up here and even figured out what my lifetime income with each district would be. Yes, I know, I mean. I left my district down the hill to work fifteen miles from home and received a seven thousand dollar pay raise at the time. In addition to medical benefits, we're fully paid. It was very humiliating when I realized that fourteen years later, I was making fourteen thousand dollars less. I can only assume that teachers coming into the teaching profession are doing the same type of homework that I did. Our students deserve and need the best teachers. We want to attract the best teachers. The way you do that is through salary and benefits. That's just a fact of life. If you were offered two jobs and one paid four and a half percent less, which one are you going to take? I will leave you with this question. What happens to the commitment to bring the highest, to being the highest-paid district in the high desert? I will, um, thank you for your time and for allowing me to speak for ADTA tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Uh, that concludes our closed session speakers, uh, board president.
Okay, okay, moving on to section six, recessed to closed session. Can I get a motion?
Emotion?
Have a motion by trustee Eckes. Is there a second?
Uh, Benz, I second.
Okay, trustee Benz, second. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I. Motion passed four zero. The time is.
Five forty-nine.
Five forty-nine P. M. We are in closed session. Thank you. Is everybody back on? Dr. Mitchell?
Uh, yes, president.
Are we ready to start?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are we back in, are we online right now? Back into open session?
Yes, we're in open session.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Uh, moving on to section eight. Oh, I'm sorry, section seven. Uh, reconvene open session. The time is seven o'clock. Seven oh one, call to order. Roll call and quorum established.
Trustee Benz.
Benz here.
Trustee Eckes.
Here.
Trustee La French.
La French present.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner present. Uh, we, uh, four zero, we have a quorum. Uh, moving on to section eight, uh, eight point oh one, announcement of reportable actions taken in closed, in closed session. There were none. Section nine, public comment period, uh, for open session items and non-agenda items. Um, I won't read that because we read that uh, when we left closed session. The only change is that you can uh, speak on items that are not included on the agenda. So nine point oh two, audience members, do we have any?
Uh, yes, Madam President, um, we have Matthew Carlson. Uh, please feel free to unmute yourself. Thank you.
Dr. Mitchell, I am looking for Matthew, and I do not see him in the meeting at this point. Um, if he is in the meeting, if he could just email me or um, press the yes uh, check mark, so that way I can know who he is and unmute him.
Great, thank you. Uh, if he pops, it will, will come back to him. And so I'd like to welcome to the board Nanette Cadilly, president of ADTA. You feel free to unmute yourself, Nanette. Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening, once again, cabinet trustees and Dr. Mitchell. I'm the ADTA president, Nanette Cadilly. I would like to start off by thanking Dr. Mitchell for his conservative stance against prematurely returning to in-person learning. He understands that disruption is more harmful to our students to go back to class only to have to return to distance learning, as many other districts have experienced. I cannot uh, go on with my speech without acknowledging how COVID has now reached our AESD family. We just lost our CSEA union sister Rose uh, Perowski to this terrible virus. Another union sister from ADTA lost her husband Vince Rubio to COVID on Christmas Day. This family has strong ties to this district as Mrs. Rubio, a sped teacher, also has a son that taught in our district, and this was his father that passed. This family also had other children that were students in our district. We have been recently notified that yet another ADTA sister's father has COVID and his health is failing rapidly. There may be many more union brothers and sisters that we are unaware of dealing with the declining health of their immediate family members. This is no longer a virus affecting someone you know who may know someone. It is right here. We would like to express our deepest condolences to all of the family members dealing so closely with this and to those that lost their loved ones. This brings me to the next point. It has been extremely stressful to not know whether we are going back to campus, how, when, and under what circumstances. We are encouraging the board to make a final decision, just as San Bernardino City District has, to close school for the rest of the year, allowing our teachers to focus on our instruction rather than the continual contemplation of the risk to return or to be forcibly vaccinated. Of course, we all want to be back in class with our students and with our colleagues. We know the students do better face to face, but we also know that it's not safe to do so, and it is more important to protect our health and our lives. Even if the numbers got better, hybrid is not the answer. Take the stress off of the parents, off of the students, and off of our staff. We will have less anxiety knowing what we will be doing the rest of the year. If the numbers get better and we have taken all measures to be safe, maybe the possibility of summer school can be an option to get the students prepared for next year and have that transition between this year and the next. On another note, we feel that it is your responsibility to use any of the COVID money that has come uh, to our district in a smart and responsible manner. The responsible thing to do is to update all of our air conditioning units so that it can hold the highest-quality filters needed necessary to keep us safe. Use that money to upgrade our technology and bring us closer to a reliable, highly-functioning twenty-first-century system. There may not be another opportunity to make a sweeping district-wide improvement such as these. Thank you for your time, and I hope that the trustees will personally reach out to these families that have lost their loved ones due to this horrible virus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cadilly. Um, is there a representative from CSEA who would like to address the board? Okay, saying none. Um, and thank you for those comments, Mrs. Cadilly, regarding the um, impact of COVID. Uh, moving on to uh, section ten, adoption of the minutes, ten point oh one, board minutes approve as written. I went up too fast. Can we go back to ten point oh one? Okay, um. Approve as written and order file regular board meeting of December fifteenth, twenty twenty. Can I get a motion?
I mo, mo, motion to approve.
A motion by trustee Benz. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by trustee La French. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee Eckes.
I'm gonna vote no because I wasn't there.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I. Motion passed three one. Moving on to section eleven, public hearing and sunshine proposal. Uh, eleven point oh one, public hearing sunshine proposal for negotiations with California School Employee Association, CSEA, chapter four fifty-one. And on this one, we'll be talking salary, um, article five, salary, article six, health and welfare benefits, early retirement, life insurance, and medical. Our article twelve, hours and overtime, and article twenty, transportation. I'll open this public hearing at seven oh eight. Is there anyone that would like to comment on any of these articles?
Those in attendance, we welcome you to um, uh, use your Zoom to raise your hand, and we'll be happy to unmute yourself and uh, address the board. Thank you.
Okay, board, do you have any comments or that you were questions that you would like to ask regarding uh, the sunshine proposal for CSEA? Hearing none, I will close this uh, public hearing at seven oh nine. There were no questions. Okay, moving on to eleven point oh two, sunshine proposal for negotiations with California school employers, oh, let's see, oh, again, um. Sunset proposal for negotiations with California School Employee Section Association, CSEA, chapter four fifty-one. And I need, why aren't we, this is the sunshine proposal, why is this here like this?
Yeah, we, we need a motion to accept the, for the board to accept the uh, sunshine proposal.
I need a motion for the board to accept um, the sunshine proposal. I'm sorry, who was that? Is that, was that you, trustee Eckes?
I can.
I'm sorry. Okay, I got a motion by trustee Eckes. Is there a second?
A second, love.
Uh, second by trustee La French. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
And trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I. Motion passed four zero. Okay, we're moving now item, section twelve, consent agenda. We will be taking section, items twelve point oh two through twelve point sixteen. We will be pulling twelve point fourteen, which is human resources, uh, administrative new hire, and we will be modifying twelve point thirteen, human resources, extra duty assignment. Um, and Mrs. Leve, did you get the changes regarding the funding source for um, the after-school?
Yes, I did.
Well, okay, great. Okay, so we will be taking um, twelve point oh two through twelve point oh nine, academic services, business services, we have three items, twelve point ten through twelve point twelve. And then human resources, we have twelve point thirteen, we remove twelve point fourteen, uh, twelve point fifteen, twelve point sixteen. Moving on to um, item thirteen, would any trustees like to remove any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated?
I motion Eckes.
I have a motion by trustee Eckes. Is there a second?
Second, La French.
I have a second by trustee La French. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I. Motion passed four zero. And moving on to section fourteen, staff reports and presentation. Fourteen oh one, presentation for developer fees. Uh, Mr. Kraus will be doing a presentation for these fees, but I'll turn it over to Dr. Mitchell. Dr. Mitchell.
Uh, thank you, uh, trustee Turner. Uh, we're gonna welcome uh, Mr. Michael Kraus, our uh, assistant superintendent of business services to uh, walk us through his presentation on the developer fees. Mr. Kraus?
Great. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell and members of the board. Good evening, everyone.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell and members of the board. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna share my screen with you this evening. On developer fees. So again, thank you very much for the opportunity to present our developer fees, what they are and how we are using them. And later on in the board agenda, you will see an item related to developer fees as well. So this goes hand in hand with the annual report and the resolution that the board will be considering in a few moments. So when we talk about developer fees, you may have heard what are developer fees? So when you're coming down to 395 towards Air Expressway, you may see a lot of new housing going in in Adelanto. Before a construction company can build houses, they have to pay what they call developer fee to offset the impacts of that new residential or commercial building that they are doing. So basically, they have to go down when they submit their plans to the Planning Commission or the Planning Department and they pay a certain fee that goes to school districts called developer fees to offset. For instance, new students coming to the district, if the district has to increase portables or add on to a school because of new students coming in because of the new residential areas. Even commercial buildings have to pay developer fees, even if no students are generated from that commercial building. But this was passed into law in 1986 and all school districts in the state of California receive developer fees when somebody goes to pull permits to build residential or commercial. And so what are the current rates per square foot? So this is how it is calculated. So if you want to add on to your house, say you live in Adelanto and you're like, hey, I want to build a new garage or I want to build an additional bedroom onto my house. Before you go pull the permit, you will actually have to pay per square foot developer fees. And residential is $2.57 per square foot of additional space or new space in a residential unit. And then if you want to build a commercial or industrial building or say add on to a commercial industrial building in the city limits, you would pay 41 cents a square foot. And it's always been that different, that vastly different, where the commercial developer fee per square foot has always been much lower historically than the residential. And so when they decided on these fees many years ago, that's how it has been. And so as you'll see, they periodically are increased and residential will always be on top of the commercial industrial per square foot. So then the question comes up, what can we spend developer fees on? Well, basically, when we get the fees, they go into Fund 25. That's where they're accounted for. And we can spend them on new construction projects for capacity to accommodate new students, the result from new construction. So say, for instance, at one of our school sites, we identify that we are going to need more classroom space. There's not enough there. We could potentially purchase new portables or we could potentially add on to the existing structure using the developer fees at that school site. So that's one example of how we can use developer fees at a school site. But also, we can, as we look forward to the future, they can be expended on school facilities as being attributable to projected enrollment growth from the construction of new residential units. And to clarify what that means, even if the district as a whole is not growing in enrollment, maybe a school site or a school neighborhood is growing in enrollment. So take, for instance, Eagle Ranch. If Eagle Ranch is having a influx of new students because of new housing, then we can potentially use developer fees around Eagle Ranch area at the school to increase portables, increase capacity for those students. So it doesn't have to necessarily be the entire district is growing. It just can be individual school site that is growing and then we could use those developer fees to offset the new enrollment from that area. So as I mentioned earlier before the presentation, there is the annual report before the board. Why do we do that? Because we have to come before the board and present an accounting of the developer fees that come in each year. And also, as we look to the future, you may recall the board approved a architect firm, Runal Clark, to create a long-range facility master plan. And this is what will identify and incorporate future projects and where we potentially can spend the developer fees. We also have to ensure that we're demonstrating a relationship between the fees and the purposes for which they are charged. So there has to be clearly housing being built in the city limits of Adelanto or in the school district boundaries because we do have some schools that potentially are in the city of Victorville. And as long as the, we can say that yes, we're charging fees for those developments in our district boundaries, then that's a really reasonable relationship. And then we have to identify all sources and amounts of funding to complete incomplete projects identified by the district. At this time, we do not have any current construction projects ongoing. But in the future, as we create the long-range facility master plan, we could potentially identify areas where we could use these funds. And so every year, we have to bring this to the board and to the public to have an accounting of these funds. And so here we have the Fund 25 Developer Fee Balance Sheet. And basically, this is a snapshot that we have to report every year, the fiscal year July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020. You can see there the beginning balance of 1.2 million. And then for that fiscal year, we collected $938,000. That is a lot of development in the school district boundaries. It earned interest of $24,000. There were expenditures around $85,000 and then interfund transfer. And you see an asterisk there, 404,000. That money was transferred from Fund 25 to Fund 52 Debt Services Fund. And both the expenditures and the interfund transfers are related to paying on the certificates of participation obligations and the CFD, the community facility districts that we have as a district. And so those two there, the interfund transfer was for the COP obligation and then the expenditures on the expenditure line of 85,000 are related to payments as well related to the COP and the CFDs. And at the next board meeting, we will be having a presentation on our certificate of participation and our CFDs. And then you can see the ending balance as of June 30 is 1.7 million dollars there. So this is just a snapshot for the board and for the community to see how much developer fees we have collected and how much the beginning balance and the ending balance is as of June 30. And again, we continue to collect fees every month. Developers come in. We've seen a steady, steady line of developers coming in and paying their developer fees to the district for new construction. So there is a, the market is getting better in the district boundaries. And so we're excited about that to see that there potentially is a lot more housing coming into the district boundaries. And we hope that it equates to more students. And then again, the developer fees will increase as the construction increases as well. And with that, that ends the presentation that I have. And at this time, I'll be more than happy to take any questions from the board.
Thank you, Ms. Kraus.
Trustees, do you have any questions regarding the developer fees, five-year plan?
I'm curious why the industrial people don't have to pay more. Is it a city thing where they're giving them a break?
That's a great question. It's actually a state mandates. The State Allocation Board meets every January, around every January. And they'll be meeting soon, potentially to decide if they want to keep the rates at the same level or increase them. And so that's where it comes from. And then every district has the opportunity to either accept the new rates or keep them at the same rate they are now. So for instance, when they change the rates, the board will, it will be coming before the board to review those new rates and decide if they want to keep them, as you just saw them, or increase them on commercial and industrial related to what the state has said the max amount can be.
Okay. Are there any trustees? Trustee La French, would you like to, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Trustee Benz, do you have questions?
I have none at this time.
Okay. Okay, I have one. So, Mr. Kraus, do you anticipate, based on the growth of the new development in our area, that our developer fees will continue to grow? And other than new projects, what else can we use this money for?
Two great questions. And yes, we do anticipate developer fees continuing to increase in this year and next year. There's a lot of vacant land in the school district boundaries that developers have purchased years ago. And now that the market is steadily increasing and the demand for housing is becoming stronger in the high desert area as a whole, we believe that there will be a lot more developer fees over time. It is highly restricted, the use of these developer fees. That's one of the blessings and a curse. It's a blessing to receive them, but it's almost a curse as well because they are so mandated as to what they can be spent on. And so as we look forward to spending them, once we, once we get the long-range facility master plan in place, that will give us a much better idea of what we, where we can spend them and what we can spend them on. So for instance, portables, if there are areas that, school sites that we want to add on to because we noticed that we're running out of classroom space or projected to run out of classroom space, that is something that is definitely allowable and projects that we can look to start in the future.
Agreed. Now, can our long-range facility master plan, what the board approved a couple of weeks, a couple of board meetings ago, can we transfer those funds? Can we pay for that through the developer fees?
Yes, yes, ma'am. So part of the allowable expenditures administration of a long-range facility master plan, for instance, paying for the development of a justification study, which will be coming to the board in a, in a few board meetings related to an increase in developer fees if the state does that. So any kind of studies that are done related to facilities and enrollment growth or projected growth, that is an allowable expense for developer fees. So that is one thing that we are able to do. So for example, the long-range facilities master plan is around $132,000. That is one allowable expenditure that we will be able to use developer fees to pay for and not have to use general fund money.
Great. That's great to hear. Okay, that's all I have.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Okay. Okay, we're moving on to 1402 State Budget Updates. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, trustee Turner. So we have been busy in several meetings. As you know, the governor released his budget, a plan for 2021. And so we've gone to the governor's meeting as well as several state advisory meetings around interpreting the governor's budget. So I've asked Mr. Kraus to summarize some of the high-level information that came from the governor's budget. And so Mr. Kraus will turn over to you. Thank you.
Absolutely. Back at it again. All right. So I'm going to share my screen once more with all of you and talk about the state budget update. And again, thank you for the opportunity to present this information that we have been digesting as a cabinet, as a district team, to be able to present to you the most updated information we have as we move forward with assessing the current state of the budget for the district and then as we look to the second interim coming up in March. And so as we move forward, these are some of the items that we have been looking at. And so here is a synopsis of our discussion topics, the state financial outlook, how that's being presented. Cash deferrals, which we've mentioned before at first interim, the cost of living adjustment or COLA, you may have heard about COLA. The state teacher retirement system and public employment retirement system adjustments proposed by the governor. One-time grants, enrollment and daily average attendance. And then what are some of the next steps for the district? And so these are some of our talking points that we'll look at here in the next few slides. So what are some of the highlights that Governor Newsom proposed with the state budget when he came out with it this month? Well, he wanted, you may recall at first interim, we talked about cash deferrals in that the district, the board had approved borrowing through a tax revenue anticipation note or a TRAN when cash was not coming in on time. And so thank you for that, by the way, board, for approving that because we believe there still will be cash deferrals. And as we saw in his proposal, the governor said, well, we're gonna reduce them, but we're not gonna eliminate them. So we still have the ability to borrow cash as a district. Cost of living adjustment will be given and we'll see that in a few slides, what that's being proposed at. Also, the STIRS and PERS contributions will decrease. So that's part of the proposal the governor is putting out there as well. And then he talked about some one-time transfer districts who opened school in February 2021. And then he addressed the enrollment average daily attendance will be held harmless in 21, 22, but not in 22, 23. And we'll look at that as we move forward in our slides. So what does the state financial outlook look like? Well, there's a 15 billion surplus that's projected in 21, 22. That's the good news. And so he's using a lot of that surplus to fund projects in this year and then in the next fiscal year. Hiring is on the rise statewide, which increases payroll taxes. So the state receives most of their income from taxes. So that's good news there. Housing prices are increasing across the state, but not in all areas. In the high desert, they are increasing, but not as, as high as other areas. So there's an influx of people to the high desert. And that speaks to why we are seeing an increase in developer fees because the housing is cheaper here than, say, in Orange County and LA County. So it's increasing tremendously down there. So people are moving to where housing is cheaper. And so they're moving to the high desert. Fewer unemployment claims month over month, the state has seen. And then also capital gains are trending upward due to the stock market doing well. And so corporate taxes are on the rise. And that's what also helps fund the state budget, our corporate taxes. So when we look forward, those are some of the things that the state's looking at moving forward. And then, as I addressed a few minutes ago, the cash deferrals. So the governor's proposed to do away with most of the cash deferrals. However, in June, the deferral, the cash that the district should receive in June will still be moved to July 2021. And then the district will still utilize the TRAN program to help, help offset any cash shortfall. And one thing I want to caveat for the entire budget proposal is that until the actual state budget is signed in June, this is all a proposal. And we know that the May revise will be coming up and then it could change dramatically. So as I present this information to the board and community tonight, just keep that in mind that this again is just a proposal and it could very well change depending on what's actually signed into law come June. So then I want to just briefly talk about the cost of living adjustment, or you might hear it called the COLA. So every year, preferably in the last, historically, there's been a COLA, except this year, there was not a COLA in 2021. It was a 0% COLA. So what the governor said is for 21, 22, I'm going to propose a 3.84% COLA. I'm going to give you the COLA you should have received as a district in 2021 and I'm going to add 1.5% on top of that for 21, 22. Now you see two different scenarios there. Why? Because School Services of California, which is a very well-respected organization in school business in the state, has their projections. And then the Department of Finance up in Sacramento has their projections. And so I wanted to make sure that we presented both of them, both of the scenarios, because until, again, the budget is actually signed, it could be any of these, it could be none of these. So just to let you know what's being projected at this time by the two different organizations that most districts use as a guidebook. For 22, 23, 1.28% with School Services, a little higher with Department of Finance at 2.9. And then again, you see the gap between School Services and 23, 24 at 1.61% and then the DOF at 3.5%, 3.05%. So again, depending on what is finally signed into law, we'll know, but this is what's being proposed at this time. And then some good news, some relief on the retirement system. So employers have to contribute into the retirement system for STIRS and for PERS. So for the STIRS system, it is now proposed to go from 18.1% down to 15.92%. So a little bit of relief there for districts. And then on the PERS side, it's going down from 24.9% to 23%. So again, a little bit of relief for the budget for districts statewide, including our budget as we look forward to creating the second interim. These are some of the percentages we will be using as we move forward. Now, this is a very important slide because there's been a lot of discussion about one-time grants to open school districts by February. So you can see here that the governor proposed $450 per ADA using the LCFF formula. But LEAs must have applied or applied by February 1st to be able to open by February 15th. A very, very hefty task to get done in that short period of time to offer in-person learning to TK through grade two and to grade six by March. Now, here's one of the, as we, as we continue the conversations about COVID-19 and opening up schools and districts across the state, here's some of the parameters that have to be met first as a community and as a district in order for anyone to open up. So the LEA or the school district must be in a red, orange, or yellow tier. I can tell you that for San Bernardino County, we are not in that. We are in a deep purple tier, not just purple, but a deep purple tier. And thank you to Stephen Quintero for providing those statistics as he does on a regular basis. The LEA must be in a purple tier and can reopen with an approved plan from the Health Department unless the case rate is 25 per 100,000. Then the LEA cannot reopen regardless of any, any circumstances. And I can assure you that I don't have the exact statistics, but we are way over as a community and a county over that 25 per 100,000 cases. The district must have an updated and approved memorandum of understanding with all bargaining units and then approved COVID-19 safety plan and testing cadences in place. And what a testing cadence is, is that we have to regularly test staff on a rotating basis to test them for COVID-19. So there are many, many, many hoops to go through, even for districts that are considering trying to open up by February. trying to open up by February, uh, February fifteenth. It's, it's a very, uh, onerous uh, ask of the governor on districts to be able to do that. And, and, um, when we have discussions across the state, a lot of districts are not able to meet this, uh, ability to open by, uh, that time because there's a lot of, uh, as you can see, there are a lot of bullet points that have to be met. And so as we look forward, that's one of the things that he's offering. And, uh, we're hoping that the money, if it's not utilized in the, uh, opening up for schools, that he would then put that back into the, uh, entire state budget. And then one of the last things that the governor mentioned that, uh, is interesting, we, we, uh, you might be familiar that the fact that districts are funded on ADA. And for nineteen twenty, the districts were held to a ADA in nineteen twenty. So when we look at our nineteen twenty enrollment of eighty-two hundred and our average daily attendance of seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-one, that's where we are frozen, as well as all the districts in the state related to revenue. And for, uh, this next year, he's proposing to keep us frozen at the nineteen twenty ADA funding levels. However, the bottom bullet there talks about a district will not be held harmless and be funded based on current enrollment ADA in twenty-two, twenty-three. So wherever we are at in twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, that is where we will be funded. And so our goal is to at least be, uh, maintain our enrollment or increase our enrollment in our ADA so that when twenty-two, twenty-three comes, uh, we will not take a, uh, hit on revenue. So we're working on that as a team, as a district to, uh, increase our enrollment, increase our ADA as we move forward, especially as we get closer to twenty-two, twenty-three. So the good news is held harmless next year, but then the year after that, at least at this point, uh, he's proposing not to hold districts harmless, and they will have to be funded at that, uh, ADA level that they're at at that time. So what are the, some of the next steps? As you've heard in the first interim presentation, we will present the second interim with a budget stabilization plan in March of twenty twenty-one. In between March and July, we will borrow cash if needed, utilizing the TRAN program. In May, we will get an update on the governor's May revises of the state budget. So between now and May, the governor and legislature are going to be negotiating all of the proposals that the governor has laid out on the table. And there's a lot of back and forth, and we've seen whereby May, everything can be completely different, or it can be very similar. So until May comes, we really won't know. And then again, what's actually signed into law in June. However, in June, for us, we have to adopt the budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two year and multi-year projections. So, uh, we may or may not know what the governor is going to decide when he signs the budget in June, but we will have our budget prepared for the board and for the community at that time. And so with that, that ends the presentation on the state budget update, and I will take any questions the board may have.
Mr. Stace, do you have any questions?
I, I did it about enrollment. Did we get a lot of new kids? COVID situation and people moving, uh, in-state, out-of-state, all that stuff, Glenn? Do you know?
Trustee, I can start our current, I'm going to talk about our enrollment numbers during my comments later tonight, but just to answer your question, uh, we're currently sitting at seventy-nine forty-one. Uh, and that's up from, that's up a hundred and nineteen from November. So our December enrollment was seventy-nine forty-one. And that's up one hundred and nineteen from November.
Okay. And my question is, um, when the kids move around like this, uh, their old area keeps their, uh, attendance money. Am I correct? For about a year or so, we won't see that revenue for a while? How does that work?
Mr. Kraus?
Yes, that's a great question. So districts are funded based on, uh, P-two annual reporting, which comes out every April. And so by April, wherever the enrollment or the ADA is at that time, that is how a district is funded, except for this year and next year where we are held harmless. And so we are still being, uh, funded at the seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-one ADA level. And there is a years difference. If a student moves away, say, between one April and the next April, uh, there is that year that we would receive that funding and then the next year we would not. So it does take a whole year. They don't take it away the minute the student moves out of the district. It, it does take a uh, period of time before that does take effect. So it gives districts a little bit of cushion to make adjustments uh, throughout the year, uh, when they see a decline, uh, or an increase in students.
Okay, thank you.
Are there really other questions, uh, trustee Benz?
I do, do not.
Trustee LaFrance?
I don't have any at this time.
Okay. I have a question. Um, in the governor's, uh, presentation on Friday, they talked about our most vulnerable students, um, that, like I was, um, foster you, uh, special education students. Um, they were saying, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe Dr. Mitchell, you can explain that. What did they mean by the most vulnerable students opening up on a limited basis, even if you're in deep purple? Am I correct in hearing that?
I have Mr. Kraus responding. Thank you.
Okay.
So when the governor proposed, is proposing his, uh, update and the funding for school districts, uh, some of the population studies have shown, uh, need extra assistance. And so he wants to spend some additional revenue for districts that would open up on a cohort basis. So for instance, small cohorts of maybe five to seven students, special education students, or those students that have been identified that uh, would benefit much more greatly from in-person instruction, even if there are, even if the county such as San Bernardino is in deep purple. And so there's, uh, he wants to give districts that flexibility if their governing boards decide and they get the waivers and they get everything in place to be able to do that, to offer in-person instruction to those small, small cohorts, um, depending on the areas. And then again, depending on the governing board and the superintendent of that district, if they make that decision to do so.
Okay, uh, it was my understanding and correct me if I was correct in understanding this. Uh, in order to do that and to get that, uh, extra ADA funding of two fifty, two hundred and fifty dollars, um, we would still have to submit our proposal by February first? Am I correct on that?
That, that is correct. Yes, it's a very, uh, uh, expedited timeline, uh, to be able to, that's one of the, one of the, uh, parameters the district would have to have in place.
Okay. And he came up with this last Thursday. It was explained on Friday. And explain the process that we have to go through in order to, uh, get our, get our, uh, application in by February first? Could you talk about that?
Absolutely. So some of the parameters, again, are the, uh, approved COVID nineteen safety plan and testing cadences. So the district would have to have that safety plan already, uh, drawn up, already approved, already, uh, shared with all of the stakeholders. Uh, one of the other, uh, items is that the district must have, in order to apply, must have updated and approved MOUs with all bargaining units. And so there's a very small window to be able to meet and confer with the bargaining units on, uh, opening up the school district in person. And then also the approved health plan, uh, the approved plan from the Health Department. Uh, and that's the other issue is that no matter what, our case rate is above twenty-five per a hundred thousand. So even if we did meet a approved plan from the Health Department, our case rate is so high in the, uh, high desert area that we would not even be able to open up as a district, uh, regardless. Um, but then again, at some point that may change. But currently to, in order to meet the, uh, application deadline by February first, to open up by February fifteenth, uh, these are some of the major parameters that would have to be met in order to do so. And so we do not believe, uh, as a team, that this is something that is, uh, feasible, um, to be able to get done in that short timeframe. And like you said, he proposed it on one day and then it was presented to everyone on the next. And so, um, it's just a, a short, very short window to be able to do this.
And this, this came out on Friday, this past Friday, the fifteenth of January for us to do this by February first, if we were thinking about doing it. But, you know, based on what is required, I, I can't see us even coming close to doing that. And that short period of time is less than, that Monday was a holiday. It's less than now, what, fourteen, thirteen working days? Is it less than that to get all of that accomplished?
That is correct. And, and it was, uh, a very short window. And so we believe that, uh, it's just not feasible to be able to get all of these parameters met in that short timeframe. And we just, um, we just want to move forward with doing things in a very, um, safe and, uh, manner that's not rushed and not expedited because of funding that's offered to school districts.
I agree. Okay. And that's all I have. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kraus. And, um, if there's no further questions, we'll move on to fourteen oh three professional, professional learning and collaboration plan presentation from Braddock and Westside Park. Uh, Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, uh, Madam President. A couple of things before we move on. I just want to commend, uh, the work of Mr. Kraus. He's been, uh, a huge addition to our team. He's just, uh, just a, 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 a great professional and expert in this area. You know, great confidence in, um, his interpretation and analysis of the state budget. So thank you, Mr. Kraus, for you and your team's work on this and keep us posted. I know much more as it comes. And thank you so much.
I just saw a picture, I think it was your, uh, on Facebook that.
Okay. So, uh, the, the other thing before we, uh, we forget, uh, we want, uh, we want to have the board formally introduce our new director of fiscal services, Mr. Zach Clemmish. Uh, if you can, uh, uh, unmute yourself and, and show your video and wave to the community. We're so happy to have you join our management team. Thank you.
Oh, I missed that. Yes, I missed that.
Yes. My apologies. I sent you a text. I apologize.
Oh, you did? Oh, you did?
Let's welcome, uh, Zach Clemmish, Director of Fiscal Services. Thank you so much for joining our team, Zach. Glad to have you.
Yes, welcome, welcome.
Thank you, everyone. I am so excited and honored.
Excellent. Great to have you, Zach. So moving forward, uh, board, um, we have two schools here tonight to present their professional learning and collaboration plans to you. As you recall, I introduced a, uh, professional learning and collaboration plan, PLCP, to the district and site leaders, as well as to the ADTA Executive Board and site, uh, site representatives. The PLCP is an action plan that fosters continuous improvement of schools through focused professional learning and collaboration activities for the purpose of growing the skill, knowledge and capacity of classroom teachers to provide high-quality instruction. Uh, this plan has been developed with teacher input and is designed to strengthen the school's professional learning systems. Um, as I told you before, I, I believe, we believe that our schools are actually, our principals are actually leading two schools, uh, one university for adult learning and another that our teachers are leading for student learning. And so this plan really outlines, uh, the school's collective commitment uh, to professional learning and improving classroom practice. And so we've asked, um, we've asked Julie Hurst, Principal of Braddock Elementary School to, um, to present her plan, and she'll be followed by, uh, Mrs. Adriana Pantoha, Principal of Westside Park Elementary School to present their plans. And so with that, we'd invite Mrs. Hurst to, uh, go ahead and show your screen and get started. And welcome, Mrs. Hurst.
Can everybody see the screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So good evening, Madam President, esteemed members of the board, cabinet, and community members. I'm Julie Hurst, the Principal of Braddock School, and tonight I'm going to present the professional learning and collaboration plan for the twenty twenty-one school year. When Dr. Mitchell introduced the idea of a professional learning plan, he asked us what we wanted to see in June. The simple answer to that question was I wanted every member of the Braddock staff to walk out of the school year stronger than when they walked in. But what does that look like? Over the course of building this plan collaboratively with the staff, I have developed a vision of what stronger means. Stronger means that we have developed trust in one another, which allows us to celebrate and share best practices instead of privatizing them. Stronger means being open to feedback, even when it might not be positive. It means a willingness to collaborate and a willingness to change practice for the benefit of all. We have a unique opportunity this year to work in ways we have never worked before. And I'm excited to report to you that if we were to leave this year right now, today, that I can honestly say that each and every one of my team is stronger when this school year began and deserves much recognition for the hard work they have putting in to provide a solid distance learning environment for our kids. In regards to this specific plan, my vision is that by June, teachers will use the five Es, engage, explore, explain, elaborate, and evaluate to plan lessons that incorporate direct instruction in the literacy strategies the staff has chosen to work on, to see formative assessment practices intentionally embedded into all lessons and used to make in lesson adjustments to teaching and to see mindful practices being used to support classroom management and social emotional development. It is my intent that we will champion a culture of positive collaboration and learning. As a district, we started working on this plan in August by conducting a district-wide assessment on the types of professional development our teachers were interested in. This needs assessment identified several areas of interest, including literacy strategies, math strategies, social, emotional, mindfulness, and avid strategies. At the site, we considered the district identified interests, but before we could really choose which ones we would use to benefit our practice the most, we had to spend some time looking at our data. What areas were we weak in and what professional development could we participate in that might help us to address these weaknesses? Looking at the ASBAC data and the California dashboard, the Braddock teachers identified three problems of practice, informal writing, analyzing and presenting information, and student behavior. As administrators, we looked at classroom observational data and identified some areas we also felt needed focus if our strategies were to be successfully deployed, including lesson design and delivery, formative assessment, and student engagement and ownership in learning. To address our identified problems of practice, the staff worked collaboratively and identified mindfulness, academic vocabulary, and citing text evidence in writing as areas of focus for this year. As a site team, we looked at what strategies we could use in K-two to help us meet the challenges we faced in grades three through five in the problem-practice areas of informational writing, presenting and analyzing in, and presenting and analyzing information. The staff determined that we would work on developing the academic vocabulary of our students. We will do this by directly instructing students on tier-three vocabulary words using strategies employed by both Kate Kinsella and Robert Marzano. In addition, to help students prepare for the RACE strategy beginning in the third grade, we will use the Would You Rather strategy in K-two. Would You Rather is an avid strategy that asks students to make a choice between two answers and then justify why they chose their answer. This skill becomes a foundational skill for RACE, where students are asked to restate the question, answer the question, cite evidence, and elaborate. In grades three through five, we will teach the students how to use the RACE strategy to organize their writing with the goal of improving their ability to analyze and present information in written form, as is demanded of them by the ASBAC test. All grades will look at how mindfulness can be incorporated as a part of the day to increase a student's ability to self-regulate behavior and take ownership of their learning. As we look to change the mindsets of all, we will participate in goal-setting and reflection. A part of setting goals is to fully understand where our students are at and where we are at in meeting their needs. And to do this, we have to employ formative assessment practices. Formative assessment practices are on-the-spot assessments used during instruction to let a teacher know who understand the concepts being taught. An example of this would be a waterfall chat, where students are asked to write the answer to the teacher's question in chat, but not submit the answer interact, until directed to do so. Students then submit their answers at the same time, eliminating the chance to copy answers from their peers and giving the teachers the more accurate picture of who understands the concept. Lastly, we will be looking at how we can deliver instruction using the five Es, engage, explore, explain, elaborate, and evaluate to deliver instruction in our FOKI areas as a way to develop student engagement and learning. We are given ninety minutes each week of staff development. This is not enough time to deliver instruction on our FOKI, collaborate around practice, or to reflect on our experience. So we have set aside some of our CSI funds to be able to offer thirty hours of paid collaboration and PD time to our teachers, which gives us the opportunity to offer differentiated PD, practice skills, disaggregate data, and go much deeper into professional learning and practice than we could in just ninety minutes. Thus far, we've been able to offer two extra hours of next-gen math training, training on our footsteps to Brilliance Program, training on Aries Gradebook, training on Google Classroom, Kami, and on creating hyperdocs, which uses the five Es as a cornerstone of lesson delivery. Now that the holidays are over, we look forward to coming back and renewing our FOKI efforts. Feedback is vital to the success of our plan. We can't improve if we don't know where we started, where we are going, and if what we are doing is having a positive effect. With this in mind, we have developed several mechanisms for feedback, including a shared coaching log between administration that is allowing us to identify patterns, problems, and highlights of practice, both individually and systemically. As a result of our discussions, we are able to highlight best practices in staff meetings, identify teacher leaders in these areas, and to allow time for reflection and collaboration on systemic problems of practice. We will be implementing goal-setting with frequent staff meeting progress check-ins, and we gather plus data, minus confidence line feedback after each professional learning and share those with the staff. As we develop our professional learning in our FOKI areas, there will be things that we will look for in the classroom that demonstrate that our professional learning is changing our instructional practice. The instructional practices we should see from teachers The instructional practices we should see from teachers should include the use of formative assessments during lesson delivery, evidence of the five Es: engage, explore, explain, elaborate, and evaluate in lesson design, direct instruction of academic vocabulary, the Would You Rather strategy in grades K-2, and direct instruction of the RACE strategy in 3-5, use of mindful moments and transitions, and active goal-setting and reflection. In grades K-2, what we should see from students is the use of a vocabulary organizer, being able to defend their answer choices during Would You Rather, participation in mindful practices, and use of mindful practices to regulate behavior. For students in grades 3-5, we should see student use of the RACE graphic organizer, being able to cite text evidence in their writing, individual goal-setting and reflection, and participation in mindful practices to regulate their behavior. In order to see if our efforts are having a positive impact, we are looking for a 5% increase on the ASPAC in producing clear and purposeful writing and investigating, analyzing, and presenting information in grades 3 through 5, a 10% decrease in suspensions, office referrals, and classroom behaviors, and identified strategies seen in 85% of the classrooms on a regular basis as evidenced by our shared coaching log. It is my sincerest hope that through this process, we will emerge with a stronger culture of collaborative learning at Braddock. The Braddock staff has already made great strides this year, especially in the areas of using technology tools to improve practice and in working together to ensure everyone has the tools and support they need to be great instructional leaders. I'm excited to see how we continue these efforts in the future. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Justine, do you have questions?
I don't, but that was a really good presentation, Julie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justine LaCrench, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'll dittle with Holly. Just said, that was a great presentation, and I look forward to being able to see the outcomes, you know, once our children return back. That's a lot of great, great, great information. You guys are working very hard.
My staff is doing an amazing job, and I hope you guys get a chance to come pop into our distance learning classrooms.
We would love to.
Justine Benz?
Um, what are some of the strategies you will use for the to-in improve vocabulary?
So, we are looking at using Kate Consella and Robert Marzano model, and it basically is a vocabulary organizer that has the kids writing the word, drawing the word, doing, writing the opposite of the word, using the word in a sentence. So, there's a very specific process to what they're doing with each vocabulary word. And we're using the Tier Three words, which is the academic vocabulary.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious what the model was, but no, that's good. And I appreciate your presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Hurst. That was great. I'm just so happy for Dr. Mitchell introducing the, you know, professional development. I know that teachers have been asking for that for quite some time, and, you know, I'm just happy that we're able to do that, especially during COVID. And I know that once our teachers get back in the classroom in front of students, this will be great. You know, this will, it'll take us to another level. But my question is, what are some of the challenges that you're facing, you know, with your students doing distant learning? What are some problems that you are seeing?
Our greatest challenge is Wi-Fi and bandwidth. We have kids that drop out all the time. So, we, as administrators, we can look in Zoom to see when a student leaves a class, the reason for their leaving, and most of the time, it's dropped network connections.
What are some of the, other than bandwidth, what are some of the feedback you're getting from parents, from your parents? Is that-
For parents, it's just that this is overwhelming. I mean, I'm getting very positive feedback about the teachers. I'm getting very positive feedback about the types of activities their students are doing in class, but parents are overwhelmed when they're trying to balance what's going on at the home, what's going on with COVID, what's going on with work, and then also being a support to their students in the classroom.
And teachers, what feedback are you getting from your teachers?
With our teachers, it's student engagement, how to make sure that we're getting students involved in their learning, which is one of the reasons we're bringing in that formative assessment piece, because it does require that students get a little bit more engaged, that they're setting goals, and that they're doing reflections. And it's the same kind of things with the kids, the technology.
Okay, now, my next question, what are you doing or what is being done to address these concerns?
So, we, for the teachers, we did order all-new laptops. They're supposed to be coming in. So, hopefully, that will happen soon, because I'm hoping if we have new computers instead of the ones that we have been using for several years, that they will be able to hold the bandwidth a little bit better and be a little bit more stable in Zoom. For the parents, we are constantly updating if they need a new hotspot, if they need a new Chromebook. We are on dojo all day long, doing tech support with the parents, my office staff, myself. So, it's just a matter of communicating and being willing to be there and give them the things that they need when they need it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I know it's a difficult time, and-
Honestly, I love distance learning. I mean, I'm a techie. I've been waiting for this forever. So, I really enjoy what we're doing and excited to see how the tech comes back into the classroom when we get back.
I hear, I believe it's gonna be great. I really do. Okay, you know, I was really concerned about not having the principals present their school-side plans, but I like this. I like this a lot. I still want to see the data, and I know we don't have any data yet because of distant learning, and we haven't, you know, had any assessments. We are testing now, or we did last week, or it's coming up. But I'm really happy about this. This is great to hear. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Julie, for your presentation. I appreciate all the information. Want to commend Julie's work and dedication this year. She's really worked hard on this plan with her teachers. I've enjoyed talking with her teachers and joining their staff meeting, and I'm glad she also shares some of the challenges and difficulties presented by distance learning. So, thanks so much for your work and leadership, Mrs. Hurst, and thank your staff for their work and leadership as well. And so, at this point, we'd also like to introduce Mrs. Adriana Pantoja, Principal of Westside Park Elementary School. Mrs. Pantoja?
Evening, everybody. Give me a quick second so I can go ahead and- Good evening, Dr. Mitchell, Cabinet and Board. I am Adriana Pantoja. I'm the Principal of Westside Park Elementary School. This evening, I'm extremely excited to share Westside Park's Professional Learning and Collaboration Plan. Westside Park School has made huge improvements. We have been celebrated for being the first school in our district to receive the Gold Level recognition for our PBIS. Our site has been showcased for neighboring districts as well as within our district. However, we are still struggling to improve our academic data. As a site, we strongly believe that the action plans for our Professional Learning and Collaboration Plan will open the doors, the mindset, and the potential to improve students' outcome and achievement, teacher lesson delivery, and community participation. Creating our site Professional Learning and Collaboration Plan, our site took a survey to determine and analyze the needs of our site. Our leadership team met several times to discuss the survey results. We met in the morning. We met after school. The problem, the changes in the performance management, we discussed what was needed for our plan to be successful. As a team, we realized the problem was that even though we had valuable professional development to improve teacher learning, the professional development were not aligned with teacher collaboration, and expectation and time to practice and learn was limited. We were not seeing the results in our assessment data, nor the current professional development and collaboration practices. The changes are that in our plan, we will focus on two FOCI, which will be geared to improve teacher lesson delivery and students' learning. The plan will have time allocated to practice the learning and collaborate to share ideas for best teaching practices. The survey clearly guided us to two FOCIs, one for ELA and the other one for math, both infused with social-emotional supports. The first FOCI is on literacy strategy for learning to read, fundamental skills, and guided reading. The second FOCI is on math improvement and development of concepts and procedures using the math standards for mathematical practices. Understanding our community, we knew that social-emotional learning was a must to ensure students' learning and to provide teachers with the tools to build relationships as well as trust with our students and parents. In our Professional Learning and Collaboration Plan, we provided teachers with Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three professional development to enhance lesson design in ELA and math infused with social-emotional learning. We incorporated the importance of mindset and relationship building, incorporating positive behavior intervention support, restorative practices, mindfulness, and social skills. We planned for classroom sessions to model social-emotional learning and lesson delivery using the support of Desert Mountain Salpa, as well as our own counselors to provide one-to-one and small group support. In order for our learning, in order for learning to take place, there has to be collaboration time where teachers can plan and practice what they have learned during professional development. Our site Professional Learning and Collaboration Plan has allocated time to practice, refine, and collaborate the learning. For example, Tuesdays, we hold professional development, and on Thursdays, we use the time to practice the learning by sharing, modeling, and collaborating what was taught. For every professional development, we are requiring evidence that learning is being incorporated in the teaching and learning. By sharing the results and allowing the teachers to discuss basics for excellence in the classroom, lesson practices, and student performance, a clear plan of what we needed to do emerged. Allowing teachers time to discuss the importance of relationship, engagement, equity, social-emotional, and professionalism was a key to get all staff on board with our plan. As educational leaders, my assistant administrator and I became familiar with the basics for excellence and success criteria to set expectations and clear accountability. Teachers will lesson plan using the scope and sequence documents, grade level standards, and the curriculum pacing guide. The teachers will deliver high-quality instructions based on professional learning, professional development learning, success criteria, and basics for excellence. Admin will visit classrooms daily and provide weekly feedback via emails. The teachers will have time to collaborate, practice, and share instructional practices. During every professional development, we discuss a success criteria, paying close attention to how it looks like in the teacher preparation of the lesson, the tools and strategies needed to assure the students' learning. We focus on the importance of planning, the use of instructional strategies that allow the teachers to check for understanding, model think alouds, and the use of thinking maps to organize content. Not only are we focusing on teachers' actions, we are also looking at students' behaviors. Students will be ready to learn and will engage and be accountable for their own learning and behavior. They will have opportunities to read and respond to texts. They will cite evidence and annotate to show their understanding. Students will use multiple thinking maps to organize their thoughts. We also discuss how crucial it is to allow students the wait time to prepare for the lesson, to have tools readily available, and to create independent learners. Teachers will attain an understanding of the eight mathematical practices, the use of instructional strategies that incorporate visual learning, math talks, and multiple ways to solve a problem. Teachers will check for understanding, model think alouds, and use cooperative learning and mindfulness to support students in mathematics. The use of thinking maps will be used to organize content. We are focusing in improving teachers' lesson delivery as well as students' actions. Students will be able to identify the eight math practices. They will be engaged and held accountable for their learning. They will understand that there are multiple ways to solve a math problem. They will demonstrate their understanding through discussions, assessments, and learning logs. The mindset of how and effective direct instruction sounds, looks, and feels will be in the forefront of planning lessons that will be successful for both students and teachers. The key performance indicators to make sure our plan is successful will include daily classroom observations using success criteria and focus on site FOCI Professional Learning and Collaboration Plan. Provide observational best teaching practices for leadership to strengthen instructional joint collaboration and co-teaching. Inform teachers of non-negotiable expectations and create memos to highlight best teaching practices. Have data chats to discuss claims and targets and best teaching practices. Our next steps for teachers are to focus on lesson design and lesson delivery, collaboration with a purpose, and the use of tools and strategies for students' learning. For students, engaging lessons to promote active participation, accountability for their learning, and strategies to promote thinking. We have created a classroom visit schedule to be visible and present in every Zoom classroom. We want to be visible daily, the same way we would be on our campus. We showcase teachers and students' work quickly in our morning announcements to promote the excellent work we are doing. Every week, we receive evidence that our plan is in action and is delivering results. The leadership team and staff will continue to revisit the plan and give input for future professional development. We ask ourselves daily, will we be better on the last day of school as we were on the first day? The answer is yes. Our teachers are doing an amazing job with distance learning and using tools to deliver instruction effectively. The teachers are planning, collaborating, having discussions, and when we go through the classrooms, the students are engaged. They are happy to be part of the learning, and the parents are excited to be part of our monthly meetings where we are sharing our plan and showing them different ways to help them at home. I would like to thank my amazing leadership team, Ms. Vanessa Freeman, Jennifer Padilla, Francesca Rogers, Laura Pennington Juarez, Valerie Jordan, Gilberta Choa, Chandra Taylor, for their support in creating our site Learning and Collaboration Plan, also our amazing staff for their valuable input. Any questions? Sorry, I was nervous, so my voice was cracking.
Justine, do you have any questions?
I do. I know you're on the other side of town in coordination with the way our schools are set up. Are you having any problems or difficulties either with the teachers or the students doing the online learning?
We are having the same problems as Braddock, our technology issues, the network not connecting. We, unfortunately, we are giving out as many hotspots. As soon as we get them, we provide them for the parents. So, we've been very active on that. We have a list. Like I said, as soon as we know that there's a need, IT is aware, and IT right-of-way sends them to our school so that we can deliver them. We have even transported Chromebooks, helped parents with technology. They understand how to connect them. So, we've done above and beyond in our community to support our parents and our students.
Are you having a problem with children attending school on the computers?
We are having attendance problems. However, we are constantly calling them, and we are using a lot of our PBIS incentives to motivate them. We have a monthly PowerPoints that go on with the images and names of the students. We share them during coffee with admin, school-side leadership. So, we're trying to really promote and celebrate our students, and that is really a big buy-in because the parents want to showcase and celebrate their students. So, that really has helped us with attendance. We've also bought little chains for every single month that showcase the students, and we give them out monthly on our morning announcements. You'll see the students' names, and we're constantly celebrating them for the smallest achievement, for attendance, participation. So, all of that has been really helping.
Very nice. Good to hear that.
Justine LaCrench, do you have any questions?
I do. Your presentation was wonderful. Thank you.
I do. Your presentation was wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate that. I am enjoying this more than those school plans. This is way more informative. One question I do have, though, is you mentioned a, like a daily observation tool. What does that consist of?
When we go into this at the Zoom classrooms, we're looking at how the teacher is delivering the instruction and they're using what we have been working on in our professional development. So we have been really working hard on allowing students that wait time, having them know how to think and process their thoughts before they answer. So we're looking at just different things that we are teaching the children to, the teachers to be successful in their lesson delivery and to also understand when they need to go back and adjust their lesson so that there's actually learning taking place and not just saying, "Today I had to work on this math lesson and I completed it." So they're really questioning how they're delivering this instruction, how it looks like in the eyes of the student, how it looks like in the eyes of the teacher, and if it is astounding that the students are making a connection, and how are the students feeling about the lesson. So at the beginning, they start with, "This is what you're going to learn," and at the end, they conclude with, "Tell me what you've learned," so that they open up the discussion and the teachers know whether they need to pre-teach, do intervention, or challenge the students.
That is awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Benz?
No, I don't have questions at this time, but thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And again, yes, thank you so much. What I'm hearing is teachers are really looking at a different way of learning and how to apply, you know, the lesson and using the strategies and involving the students. And, you know, I'm really, again, reiterate, I'm really happy that we are able to offer, you know, the professional development and collaboration. You mentioned the hotspots. Are there any students without hotspots in your school?
At this moment, yes, we have a list. I believe there's about five students that are still missing hotspots, and I know that IT is working on those hotspots.
Okay, and without the hotspots, how are you, how are they getting their lesson?
What the teachers are doing, if we know that the students are having connection issues, they reach out to the parents and explain to them the work. Some of our parents have been so amazing that they've actually drove near the school and connected. So they're, they're actually driving either to a friend's house, not going in because of safety reasons, but even outside of our campus or outside Starbucks, and they're actually are trying their best to connect. So I know that our parents are doing as much as they can, as well as our district to provide the need.
Okay, now, if they're not doing distant learning, are there packages that the students can have with the same information?
Our teachers, our primary teachers have offered packages, but the packages go with the distance learning because we are trying to be as safe as possible. We are trying to limit how many times the students turn in their packages, but there is packages available, but what we really want is those packages to make sure that they have discussion so they don't turn into worksheets because then the students are just doing busy work and they're really not learning anything.
Okay, I guess I was more concerned with the students that didn't have the hotspots because, you know, you know, I have a granddaughter that, no, I don't have any work once you can't get on. And I know, come on, let's open that up again and let's look at it. So Dr. Mitchell, the five, and I'm sure that there's others, and I know that we're working really hard, but do we have COVID money to get these hotspots for our school?
Yes, trustee, the issue is not cash. The issue is logistics. With the world ordering hotspots, Chromebooks, devices, the issue is delivery and logistics. It's certainly not cash. Mr. Kraus and his team, and as well as Chris Arango has been really good. We are confident that we have enough devices, hotspots, and all of that to accommodate our teachers and students. What we're finding is logistic problems. Mr. Kraus, if you want to clarify.
Yes, thank you for that question. So as Dr. Mitchell stated, every, the hotspots are in demand everywhere, and we do have several on backorder. And there are very few vendors that sell them. One of the biggest ones is T-Mobile and Verizon. So we are in constant communication with both of those companies when the availability of more hotspots becomes available. And we will definitely, as Dr. Mitchell stated, we have the funds to be able to purchase them. We just have to get the, get them in. And, but again, the list is long and the hotspots are short in supply right now.
I believe that. I believe that. Okay, thank you so much.
Can I, can I piggyback on that for a second? Oh, I have a comment question. I'm over here by Desert Trails, and there's a Victorville school bus that parks pretty much in the Desert Trails parking lot. They've been there for a very long time off and on. And someone told me that on the bus, they basically carry or have the internet connection on the bus, and that's why it's parked there so that any children in that area can tap into the Wi-Fi through that school bus. Is that true? Have you heard anything about that? And if so, could we do something like that where we use one of our buses to go to an area that doesn't have internet or something, instead of these parents having to go to Starbucks? Because I know myself, I've had to use Starbucks, and if they're locked down because of COVID or shut down, they shut down their, their internet. And, you know, with the libraries closed and stuff, it's really hard to get internet sometimes. So I guess that's my question is, do you know anything about these school buses that are carrying internet and going to certain areas to help the children log in?
Yes, they do. There's one parked at Mesa Linda Park. Seen those buses. They're not there all day, but they are there, I think, during school hours. But my question, I don't know if it's just Victor Union High School students that can use it, or is it any students? I don't know, but they, they do exist. I've seen them.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell, do you know if we could do something like that?
Yes, so let me explore that with the team. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Happy to explore.
I didn't know if you knew about it. I just thought it was very interesting.
Yeah, I was not aware.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're happy to look into that, trustee, because thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. It might be cheaper and it might work. I don't, I don't know.
Are there any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for those presentations. They were very informative and, I can't wait to hear from all the other schools. Great, thank you.
Thank you, board.
Okay, moving on to section fifteen.
Real quick, I'm sorry, I wanted to commend the leadership of Ms. Pantoja and her staff for working so hard on their plan. Just, it's really authentic. And what you're hearing from our site leaders is, is just this collaboration and this reflective way of being and thinking as school leaders and teachers to reflect on our practice, continually hone our practice. As you know, teaching is an art and a science. Teaching is about relationship, but also teaching is also about the working relationship with, with, with teachers as peers, seeing themselves as professionals, being resources to each other. Our intention is to de-privatize classroom practice. As you know, teaching is one of the loneliest jobs in the world. Our teachers go into their classrooms day in and day out and close their doors and do their very best. And I tell you, this distance learning has not made teaching easier, that's for certain. I am, I am hopeful, along with Mrs. Hurst, that many, much of what we're doing in terms of technology, this has created, it really has been a mandated, forcing teachers to use technology in ways that they haven't before. These things that teachers are learning now are certainly going to carry over when kids get back. It's just going to make all, everything that we do much better and much more expanded. So looking forward to getting kids back in the classroom, in the bosom of our schools and teachers, and using this time right now to get better. I want our schools, in terms of our teachers' abilities and practices and mindsets, to be better than when, when they left the last spring. And so thank you so much for your time. Thank you, principals, for your effort. If you look down the line, the list of participants, board, you'll probably see all of our principals on tonight and all of our co-administrators on tonight because Mrs. Hurst and Mrs. Pantoja gladly volunteered to go first.
Good for you. Excellent job.
So the rest of the, the rest of the principals are taking note tonight. So thanks so much for all that you do, all the leaders on tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes. Okay, moving on to new business, fifteen oh one, business services, approve.
Madam President, I'm sorry to interrupt. We still need to do the motion for fourteen oh three to accept the professional learning.
Oh, okay, that was an action item? No, it wasn't.
Oh, just presentation?
Presentation, yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Business services, approval of annual and five-year reportable fees for court for Fund Twenty-Five Capital Facilities Fund Developer Fees and Resolution Twenty-Twenty-One Twelve as required by Government Code Six-Six-Zero-Zero-Six. That was a presentation by Mr. Kraus. Can I get a motion?
I, I move to approve.
Can we have a motion by trustee Benz? Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by trustee Ekis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee Ekas?
Aye.
Trustee LaFranch? Did you say aye?
LaFranch, aye. That's the first time I didn't use my name and then.
And trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye. Motion passed four zero. Okay, fifteen oh two, approval of Resolution Twenty-Twenty-One Twelve, excusing the absence of trustee Amy Hines on December fifteenth, twenty twenty. Can I get a motion?
I motion.
Approve. I have a motion by trustee Ekis. Is there a second?
LaFranch, second.
A second by trustee LaFranch. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee Ekas?
Aye.
Trustee LaFranch?
LaFranch, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye. Motion passed four zero. And I hope that trustee Hines is feeling better and will be able to join us soon. Moving on to fifteen oh three, approval of Resolution Twenty-Twenty-One Thirteen, excusing the absence of trustee Holly Ekis on December fifteenth, twenty twenty. Can I get a motion?
I motion to approve Ms. Ekas' absence.
I have a motion by trustee LaFranch. Is there a second?
I sec, second.
Trustee Benz, second. Any discussion?
Yeah, am I supposed to vote on this or is it a conflict of interest?
No, you can vote.
Okay, I didn't know.
Yeah, she can vote.
Madam President, would you like me to take the vote?
Yes, please take the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee Ekas?
Aye.
Trustee LaFranch?
LaFranch, aye.
And trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye. Motion passed four zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to section sixteen, policy introduction, updates, and readings. Sixteen oh one, adopt and approve second reading for board policy fifty-one forty-six, marriage, married, pregnant, and parenting students. Can I get a motion?
I motion.
I have a motion by trustee Ekis. Is there a second?
LaFranch, second.
I have a second by trustee LaFranch. Any discussion on this policy?
Yeah, I kind of had a question. Of course, I don't need names or nothing, but I was kind of wondering, do we have any children in our, I know we're only K through eight, but I was kind of wondering, do we have any children that are married, pregnant, or parenting that we know of?
We probably don't, but they are of age.
Yeah.
In case, we have middle school students.
I was just wondering if we actually had any children that we know of or have in the past or now that are.
Certainly, I'd be happy to look into that, trustee Ekis. Thank you.
Okay, I was just curious.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee Ekas?
Aye.
Trustee LaFranch?
LaFranch, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye. Motion passed four zero. Okay, moving to section seventeen, superintendent report. Seventeen oh one, events and future activities significant to the district. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, trustee Turner and board members. Thanks so much for this time. I just want to touch on a few things that you heard throughout the presentation as well as just deliver a couple bits of information and news for the benefit of our community and our, and our staff. So number one, just want to touch on probably the hot topic, which is COVID. And as you know, our daily cases are above a hundred and forty per one hundred thousand. As you saw with the governor's proposal around reopening, he's put the limit at twenty-five to a hundred thousand, twenty-five cases per one hundred thousand. We currently are over one hundred and thirty, one hundred and forty cases per one hundred thousand. Now, we are certainly not eligible to apply for, from, from those reopening dollars, not to mention the, the, the number of parameters that the, that the governor has placed on those dollars as discussed by Mr. Kraus earlier in terms of having MOU bargaining agreements in place, having safety plans in place, having testing parameters in place. We'd be testing staff almost every week. And so it's just a huge undertaking. And so we're, we're hoping to see redeployment of those dollars to benefit our general, our general fund. And so hopeful that that will be a change. But currently, just to update you, in terms of somebody in the county, we're well over a hundred and forty cases per one hundred thousand. Our positivity rate is twenty-four point one. As you know, that should be well below eight. And so our, our region and particularly our Adelanto Elementary School District are having really dangerous numbers. And as you know, board, we've enacted a work-from-home order with our staff, and we've asked our staff to work from home to the greatest extent possible. That still is in effect through January thirty-one, and we'll reevaluate that order as soon as we get closer. But we're hopeful that the vaccines will be coming soon and the COVID can loosen its grip on our nation and our community. Board, I want to just give you some enrollment numbers. I did say some numbers earlier, but our current enrollment as of December two thousand twenty was seventy-nine forty-one. Again, seventy thousand nine hundred and forty-one students were enrolled in our schools in December. That's up one hundred and nineteen students from the month of November. Our current attendance rate is ninety point four seven for December. Again, ninety point four seven with a low of seventy-seven point four five and a high of ninety-seven point four one. So our average current daily, daily attendance is ninety point four seven. We are experiencing higher-than-usual chronic absenteeism. As of December, our absentee, our chronic absenteeism, meaning that kids are missing ten days or more of school, is at twenty-four point one. That's up from November of twenty-one point four. So just wanted to report that, and as you heard from, from Ms. Pantoja tonight, that we are working diligently and hard on getting our kids engaged and involved in distance learning. It's really tough. As you also heard, the responsiveness of our IT department to get broken Chromebooks replaced and get hotspots to families. We, if we're not, we, we, we have failed if we're not at a hundred percent, but we certainly are working hard to maintain as high a percentage of our kids having connectivity and access to technology as possible. Certainly, it's not a cash issue. We've ordered loads of technology for our staff and for our students. And so just waiting on things to come in and, and staff to tell you that these things are trickling in every day. And as soon as it's getting in, we are getting it to the hands of our principals. And so you heard that, a little bit of that tonight. And then just, just again, want to commend our, our, our two principals tonight that presented, Mrs. Hurst and Mrs. Pantoja. But also commend the rest of our principals who have just, who have worked just as hard on their plans. We've seen them all at this point, and so it's just a matter of time before you're able to see them, see them all. I'd like to have them go all in one night, but you'd, you'd be, you'd be tired by the end of the night. Our principals are excited about what teachers are doing and what teachers are engaged in. I'm excited as well. Again, we want to have our schools better. Again, we want to have our schools better when kids return than when we left in the spring as a direct result of improvements in our adult learning model across our school. So, so proud of their work, board. Want to share a couple of things across divisions. In our academic services department, we are administering the summative LPAC assessment. As you know, L, the LPAC assessment is the California standardized test for our English language learners. That those tests begin March ninth through March twenty-sixth. We have approximately fourteen hundred students that will need to test, and so we're working diligently on that to make sure that we're able to test all fourteen hundred kids within that window. We also have, Ms. Turner, to your point around some data for our kids, we will be administering the ICA. That stands for interim comprehensive assessment, and that basically is a small version of the, of the CASP. And so we'll be administering that district-wide beginning January twenty-fifth. And so we'll have a little semblance of some data to kind of get a sense for how our kids are doing in relation to the California state standards. And so we'll be able to report that information to you. The schools will also be utilizing that data to drill down on where we might provide some, some tier-one intervention, that's a tier-one intervention, intervention that's happening real-time in a classroom to close learning gaps for our kids as we go into the screen testing season. Also want to report again that our district is proud that all of our schools and teachers, District Y TK through eight, are using the online grade book through Ares. This allows increased access for our parents to, to be able to see their kids' progress in terms of their grades online through Ares Parent Portal. And so this is, this will be a first for our district that we have a hundred percent access to, for parents to view their kids' progress in real-time in their teacher's classroom. So we're happy to report that. Also want to report some good news. We've been awarded almost a little over one point nine million dollars from the Early Literacy Support Block Grant to increase literacy initiatives at Adelanto Elementary School, Westside Park Elementary, and El Mirage School. And so happy and, and for our staff applying for that grant, which we've been awarded, and we'll begin spending those dollars as, as we're planning the most impactful ways to spend those literacy dollars to support those schools. So, so, so thank you. Ms. Turner, you asked me to kind of give a report on what's, what's distance learning looking like? We will, we do have an upcoming date. I will send an announcement to the board and when you'll be able to walk, virtually walk through classrooms with me to, and we'll try to cover as many classrooms as we can to use your time as wisely as possible. So that you're able to see with your own eyes, see, hear, and feel what, what it's looking like in our classrooms and amazing work that our teachers are doing, the amazing work. And, and you know, just the sheer grit of our students that are sticking in there and hanging in there and making the best they possibly do, due to COVID. And so we'll be able to walk through classrooms with, with me and observe some classrooms and, and get your feedback and input and see some of the great things that's happening in classrooms. As, as, as dismal as it is, as COVID has created this time, that we still have huge amount of engagement, excitement among our kids, because, you know, kids are just natural learners. The human, the human body is just a natural learning being. And so we're doing our best, and I'm proud of the work. Certainly from day one to day, to now, a huge growth in our teachers and systems to be able to deliver in this environment is very difficult. So thank you. So look forward to that. In terms of business services, we're happy to report that the, that the San Diego County Department of Public Health has requested to use our school sites to administer the COVID-nineteen vaccination for the broader community. They've also, and will begin coordinating these efforts. At Columbia Middle School will be our first vaccinations site. When these, when we are able to administer the vaccination to educators, we've asked the county Department of Public Health to prioritize our district since they're using our school. And so staff and staff, please look forward to that coming news. We're also happy to report that all of the portals within the district have been repaired over the last two months to include, to include replacing wooden ramps with metal ramps, showing of foundations, and repairing holes in walls and roofs. And so we're happy to report that kids will be coming back to campus and to an improved facilities. And so we're so happy about that. As you requested, board, I think this came from trustee Ekas, we have updated our site maps. And so we, and, and, and we've developed some folders and banners for you to put in your trunks of your cars that has updated site maps and emergency plans for each of our schools. So we'll be getting those out to you soon. The other thing too is that we are currently installing automatic paper towel dispensers at all of our schools so that our staff and students can use our restroom facilities touchless. Thanks for that work with our management operations department for their work that they've been continuing to do to make our school district look great and be safe for our staff, for students. In terms of human resources, we are still continuing to conduct contact tracing as, as required by the Department of Health when we having, we have staff in contact with a person who's been tested as COVID positive. We are, we have migrated all signatures in the district, including your board certifications board. Thank you so much for getting on with DocHub. And so all of the signatures, you know, to reduce contact between, between humans and to reduce the spread of COVID, we've migrated as much signature material as possible to DocHub. And so thanks for your participation in that as well. There's a new, there's a new compliance called ABC six eighty-five. It's a bill that was signed and went into effect on January first. It requires us to provide written notification to staff who've been exposed to someone with COVID. And so we've, we're implementing those procedures now. And staff who have been, who possibly have been exposed to another staff member with COVID will be sent an email to advise them of, of, of that possible exposure. And we are continuing to update the district website with additional COVID-nineteen resources. And once we get closer to being able to vaccinate educators, we'll be able to post that information as well for our staff. In terms of our public information office, our public information officer, Stephen Quintero, still been busy being as visible as well as myself and, and other members of cabinet being invisible, visible across our, our, our region and county. Of course, we've been attending all of these state budget meetings. There's been several of them to interpret and analyze the governor's state budget. I've also, we've also been busy with the new, the, the new Greater Hyatt High Desert Chamber of Commerce. As you're aware, you may not be aware, but all of the chambers of commerce for Hisperia, Victorville, Adelanto have now merged, and they are called collectively the Greater High Desert Chamber of Commerce. And so we, I had an opportunity to address the community, the camp, the chamber alongside my peers and my superintendent peers in, in, in the area. And all of us addressed the chamber. It had a hundred business people on there, and we were all able to give updates about what we're doing in the school district. It was a great meeting. Our public information officer is continuing to update our website with the latest COVID-nineteen data. And also our social media is continuing, continuing to grow. Please like us public so that you can get updates on the great things going on in Adelanto Elementary School District. And then also, as, as you're aware, we've asked staff to work from home to the greatest extent possible. So all of our schools have developed virtual offices. And so parents are, have still been, we're still trying to be highly responsive to our parents. And so when you call the school, you will get someone. Even though staff may be working from home. So public, if there's anything that we can do, please don't hesitate to contact your schools. Our principals are more than happy to help you and assist you. And as you, if you heard the conversation earlier, please, please let us know if you need any technology, whether it be hotspot or a computer for your child. We want to have your child have what they need to be successful. So please let our schools know, and our principals will certainly do everything possible to get you that, get you what you need to be successful. And with that, those are my comments. Thank you, board.
If you got the material. Lot of question. Board, do you have any questions regarding Dr. Mitchell's comments? And updates?
No.
Trustee Ekas?
No.
No, okay. Okay, I thought I had one, but the guy talked with him already about it. Okay, moving on to eighteen, section eighteen, governing board members' report and announcements. Let's see, trustee Ekas, you want to go first?
Yeah, I, I don't know what to say. I'm hearing all these deaths and so much sadness going on. I just want to say personally that my, and prayers go out to all the teachers and staff and everybody who's dealing with this. I know I've lost a few people and it's, it's numbing. It, you just don't know how to comprehend it, and it's just so many so fast. So again, I just want to say I'm just so sorry. And my heart and prayers go out to everybody who's dealing with this, whether you're going through it or you know somebody who's passed. It's, it's just so much. It, it's just overwhelming. And again, I'm just so sorry. We're all going through this. The other thing is, on a happy note though, I just want to thank everybody for their support and their well wishes during the election before and after. And I'm just, I don't know, it's just such an honor to be back on the board and to serve this district. It's my family, and I love everybody, and I miss the schools and hugging everybody. But you know, things are, are the way they are right now. I'm sorry. Did somebody say something?
Probably a, a computer glitch.
Okay, I thought somebody told me I was muted. I'm just talking to myself. I'm sorry. Anyway. Thank you all. Again, it's just such an honor to be on this board, and I just, I'm very blessed, and I just can't thank enough, you know, God and everybody for their support and, and for me being able to be back on the board and serve this great district. So thank you. And yeah, just thank you. I'm very blessed.
Thank you, trustee Ekas. Trustee Benz?
Just real quick, I, I want, want to say, Miss trustee Ek, Ek, Ekas, it's ni- nice to see, see you on Zoom. That's nice. So.
Thank you.
Um, I just, you know, I want to thank the, the, the staff for their hard work. I know this distance learn, learning isn't e-easy. I, I struggle at, at times, you know, but what can we do? So just know you are appreciated, though it doesn't feel li-like it. You, you are. And not just for me, but I know your, your pair, parents do, do too. So, and I just want to. I lost my train of thought. Just pray, prayers for all those who have lost fam, family mem, members. Let's please, you know, practice the safest distancing and just keep it in mind and be, 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 be safe. Okay? Thank, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Benz. Trustee La French?
Okay, I want to just start off by saying, you know, thank you to our whole entire ASD family. And I am grateful that we are all at home, working from home. I'm saddened by the family members that we have lost, and my prayers go out to them. I pray that we all continue to stay safe and, you know, we are able to see everyone next month. It's so important for everyone to stay home. I know that we are in such a deep purple that I myself, I pray that we don't go back this year. I pray that everybody stays home and, and stay safe until all this is over with. I know that as a parent, you know, parents are very appreciative of what the teachers are doing right now during this time. It was so nice to hear about the professional development and how it's going forward. I just pray during this time that we continue to stay home and we continue to stay safe and try to stay away from each other as much as possible. You know, when it comes to, I was listening about like sending papers home and papers having to come back. Those are like, all like little COVID fingers or something, you know? So I wouldn't, you know, want, you know, anyone to have to be exchanging information, you know, by paper. It's a, it's nice to know that, you know, that there are platforms available so we don't have to come into contact with one another. And I just thank everyone for what they're doing right now.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, trustee La French. And you know, I concur with all of my other trustees regarding, you know, what we're going through right now. You know, I've served a lot of years on the district, and this is the first time, served as president two times before. But, you know, doing this online is really a difficult thing. You know, I thought that, you know, I got this, but, you know, it's difficult. And thinking about our students, you know, what they may be going through. Even though we cannot risk their health and welfare of our students, our staff, you know, even the parents, you know, and our custodials, I, I, our, our entire staff, you know, I, I hope that we don't rush into going back anytime soon until the vaccine, vaccine is widespread. I'm not for mandatory vaccination. It should be, I'm not for that. But I just hope that everyone really considered the vaccine and, and do your research. I was totally against it a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, I had a birthday just a couple, last week, two weeks ago, and I turned sixty-seven. And, you know, I'm on that list of eighty-five percent of, of seniors are dying from COVID. And so it's really disheartening. And when you look at over four hundred thousand deaths in the United States, that's a lot. And I'm sure that everyone can attest, someone very close to them or someone that they know has succumbed to this illness. And it's serious. It doesn't come with a price tag. Okay, look, I got COVID. Or, you know, you come near me, you'll get COVID. This is a silent. It's a silent contagious virus, and you don't know. And you can't let your guard down, not for one moment. And, you know, I've let my guard down several times, and I thank God that, you know, I survived it. But, you know, I'm really practicing, really, really practicing. Isolation. I'm getting ready to get into that. I mean, because I don't know, even though I've been approved to get the virus, and, you know, the next on the line is, well, education, teachers and educational staff is approved, you know, we may not be able to get that virus, that vaccine for quite some time now. So just because it's been approved doesn't mean that you're going to get it because the supply is not there, you know? So what we have to do is to stay mindful, just hang in there, parents, if you're there, you know, we're going to get through this. And, and Dr. Mitchell is preparing, you know, has implemented major professional development for our teachers. You know, we may not do well this year. But I believe that if we rush and come back, our losses will be even more greater than what they are right now. Okay, so we have to just be patient. And I know it's hard in these day and times to be patient. You know, with all the technology at your fingertips, you got phones at your fingertips. When I grew up, we had a corded phone. And you, the cord, the phone only went as far as that cord allowed you to go. Otherwise, you have to walk to the phone. One television in the house, you know, so with seven channels on the TV, on the television, you know, so we have to be patient. You know, we have to exercise that. We will get through this. We will get through it, but it takes time. And I know it's very difficult for our parents, you know, to see their child struggling on a computer. But their child is there, you know, I've. I know it's difficult, and it's nothing that I probably could say to you to ease that concern for you, but your child is safer with you at home. I could say that right now. And so with that being said, I just want us to say we're in this together. I want to thank our teachers for. I want to thank our teachers for being welcome and being open to the professional development and, you know, expanding your careers and your education and your experiences. And I know you're going through it. And I know it's difficult for you to see a child struggling. And um I just want to thank Dr. Mitchell. You know, he came to our district in June, you know, at three months into COVID, when we were shut down. And you have made an impact on our district. And I appreciate that. And Mr. Kraus, you know, your short time, you've you've discovered some things that, you know, I just have to say thank you from your experience and your, you know, your experience. I want to say thank you. And uh Andrea, thank you. And Dr. Williams, thank you. And the board, thank you for what you, all you do. And it's good to see your face, Holly.
Ah, thank you.
So, you know, uh, yesterday was um Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday. And, you know, with everything going on in our country, I just want us to look, take a step back. We're all human beings. We're human beings. We're not Republicans, we're not Democrats. We are, we all have different, we're, we're from a different race. And God did that purposely, and that's not a mistake. You know, he did that so we can learn from each other. We all bleed red. And if we were to be turned inside out, we all look the same except for a little fat here, little heart, you know, different things there. But we were all, we were all made from the same cloth. And that's something that we have to understand and stop the hate. It's too much hate. We got to love each other. Okay, we may not agree, but we have to love each other. Stop putting each other down, you know, and and realize that our children are watching us. Our children are watching us and the choices that we make. They're looking at the television and seeing all of that going on. Why? What do we tell them? What do we say to, what do we tell our children when they ask us questions about adults and the decisions that we're making out there? We got to think about them. We got to think about them. And sometimes we hold our children more accountable than we do adults. Okay, a schoolyard brawl, kids fighting on the yard, they will be expelled, may not be able to go back to school for two semesters, depending on, you know, their past history. But we have to look at our actions as well and how we treat each other. And sometime we make, we make decisions and you may not like them, but the decisions are made for a reason. And um with that being said, uh, I just want us to love each other more. Tomorrow's not promised. You know, come the next board meeting, one of us may succumb to COVID. I heard some bad news today from someone that I knew and a young man, you know, that that they're turning off the life support, a young man. So we have to really think about it, think about our love for each other. And I just want to close this meeting and hopefully the vaccinate, the vaccines will come fast enough for those who want to take them. And we will make the best decision for our staff and our students to be safe this school year. And hopefully the next school year, we could come back. We probably won't, it won't be business as usual, not after this year, but we'll learn. We would have learned from last year. So with everything, I just want to say I appreciate each and every last one of you. We may disagree, but I still love you and I still will be here for you. If you need me, call me, because I will be here for you. Okay, so with that being said, um I'll move on to uh, where is my paper? I will move on to ninth, Section nineteen adjournment. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion, Akis?
I have a motion by Trustee Akis to adjourn. Is there a second?
Uh, uh, Ben sec- second?
Trustee Ben second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee Akis?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye. Motion pass four zero. The time is eight fifty-nine. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you and everyone have a good night and be safe and healthy.
Good night, everyone. Thank you for
Good night.
Have a good, be safe, be well.
Stay safe.
Thank you.